We're rolling.
All right, good evening. I'd like to open the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Let's introduce the commission. Let's start with our special guest this evening, First Selectman Dan Carter.
Mike Kazlowski, commission member.
Eric Fredbly, alternate.
Ken Stevens, chairman.
Cindy Grant.
Diane Ryan, alternate.
Paul Shanley, commission member.
Douglas Keeney, alternate.
Bob Legnart, commissioner.
Thank you, Bob. Staff?
Beth Kabak, now Director of Planning.
Amanda Martinez, reporting secretary.
David.
Paul Landis, coordinator.
Thank you. I don't have the official electronic use statement in front of me, but anyone using electronic devices during our meeting is using this only for the purpose of accessing information currently on the Google Drive for the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, let's have our business meeting. I can't hear you. We have five.
Now we've got to sit for seven.
We're missing Spur.
Duncan said for Spur.
Yes.
Is Spur a full member?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm going to see Doug Keeney for Mr. Spur. Minutes. Everybody had an opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections?
Wait a minute.
Updates?
Who's the alternates on the commission? I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman.
Me.
Diane.
Okay. So how many full members do you have here this evening?
One, two, three, four, five.
We're missing Ken.
Keeney, one more.
You're missing Ken Parsons and Spur Bray.
That's right. We have Ken, I'm sorry.
So another alternate can also sit.
Yeah.
Yes. Great for Ken Parsons.
But please also, just to a matter of clarification for you, even though the commission, all the alternates are not sitting this evening, which since this is really just a general meeting with the commission itself, and I don't anticipate any votes being taken outside of election of officers, you can surely participate in any portion of the meeting.
And Amanda keeps track of who seated wins so that we make sure that we rotate everybody. Okay, back to the minutes. Changes, questions, comments?
Let's make another ten to you. Two for a minute.
About second, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Against, abstains, so moved. Beth, do we have any invoices?
No.
Amanda?
No.
Nope, no invoices. Good. Work session. It's official. I am, have suspended my resignation to Lisa Berg, effective tomorrow. Beth has to let it present to her and to Mr. Carter. So at this time, we're going to do a quick motion on election of officers. I would put forth a motion that we elect Spal Shanley as chair, Kitty Grant as vice chair, and Michael Kazlowski as secretary.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Robert. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstains, so moved. Congratulations, and I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Shanley.
Before we do that, if you don't mind.
Can I move over there?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I don't mind.
Um, I just would like to, I've got to start over already, I guess. I would just like to take a moment on behalf of the staff of the Planning and Zoning Department and members of the commission, both here now and previous members of Inland Wetlands and the Planning and Zoning Commission, to thank you, Ken, for your many years of service to the town of Ethel on those boards and also through other organizations such as St. Mary's, such as VNA, such as the Historical Society, and you've been a very treasured member of the commissions and also of the town of Ethel itself. And that's obviously, that's all I can say at this point, and, and thank you very much, and I wish you a great adventure ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a great time to be here.
I'd like to say a few words too about Ken. He's been amazing last week for getting him involved in this. But I guess I should take the credit too because he's been a great success at it. He's done a good job on inland wetlands, and he did a good job here helping us in planning and zoning. So thank you, Ken.
Forever indebted to you.
Mr. Chairman, may I have your recognizes, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Ken. You know, on behalf of the town, and you know, you've heard about the eighty-twenty rule, twenty percent of people do eighty percent of the work. Thank you for being a part of that twenty percent and then some, and for everything you've done for the town over these years, and I wish you the very best in your future.
Thank you.
Um, it sounds like you'll be around the area once in a while, so.
I may pop into a meeting or two, you never know.
We'll count on it.
Please do. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And Beth, John said there's cake. Is the cake going to be quickly?
I've already been reprimanded for not bringing donuts when I came in the door.
Ken, thank you.
Donuts. Wine and cheese, maybe.
There you go. Now you're talking.
All right, go on. Take it away.
All right, um, I guess we're moving on to the POCD review?
Yes, so what I did was at the last meeting, I said, because we have an opportunity, but not a lot of applications in front of us for the next, at least for this meeting, it was an opportunity to do something that stuck in my mind from when we first adopted the POCD. And I see the person that put that bird in my little ear is here this evening, and she made a very, very good point when we adopted POCD, that we should take the time to go over and review where we are. The POCD was adopted in twenty-twenty. It took, so it took effect in uh, January of twenty-twenty. And so here we are, going through some of the implementation plan. Um, and I just thought it was good to help you guys feel good about yourselves, number one, because you're so used to having applications in front of you. A lot of them could be contentious. Some of them could be, um, difficult. Um, but it's also important to know where, where you started and where you've gone, and where you can even do better, or other aspects of the town can do better department-wise. So I'm just going to briefly go through some of these items with you, give you information. If there's things that you want to discuss in regards to it, um, let's do it. One thing you should note, I mean, we have all the little acronyms in the front telling you what department, what board, what should be a priority, what is uh, out there for long term, et cetera. I think the most important thing that we did when we did this plan in twenty-twenty, um, outside of ideas and how we're going to get there, is to be also asterisk a lot of the plan pertaining to sustainable initiatives. And that was done really in terms, it was done at the last minute, but it was done because at that point, the state of Connecticut adopted a statute pertaining to sustainability, that it should be a goal of all the area towns and cities to try to accomplish that. And so when the town of Ethel goes for grants or funding and things like that, it will be another little good test mark to mark off saying, yes, we are a sustainable town. It moves you up the ladder when it comes to funding and bonding and things of that nature. Um, so in dealing with it, I just wanted to emphasize that portion of the plan. Um, so when you talk about, we start off immediately with leverage of the twenty-sixteen Bethel Forward Study. Um, again, what I'm just going to be doing is highlighting where I think accomplishments and, um, successes have occurred. I think that as far as the Planning and Zoning Commissions, um, when I look at Greenwood Avenue and what has occurred along Greenwood Avenue since the adoption of the regulations in twenty-eighteen, you've seen improvements in architecture, you've seen improvements with someone just coming in and doing the basics of siding, but you also have seen some additional residential units that have been developed. Uh, two-twenty Greenwood Avenue has a two-unit barn behind it. Um, two-twenty is next to Ray Flanagan's portrait shop where the barber is. Uh, go down the road, two-five-three Greenwood Avenue, um, has a very small, beautiful garage behind that. It has two units and a small office sitting. You look at the opposite side of the street, you have the Blackman Avenue on the corner, which also had that old barn, the white barn that is presently there now, was readapted to be used for residential properties, uh, residential components. So you've seen in the majority of the downtown Greenwood Avenue area, you've seen upgrades in appearances of the residential, uh, single-family homes or multifamily homes, but you also see some of, some of them take more pride in their properties. And by allowing them to do, uh, their barns or the carriage houses, whatever you wish to call them, to the rear of the property, it's enabled them to provide housing, number one, in the downtown area where it should be, and also to, um, improve their properties. It gives them the opportunity to improve their facade, to make them want to do, I recall, was it two-twenty Greenwood Avenue, Bob, that they were so excited when they got their approval that they extended it by using, working with their general contractor to make improvements to the front facade of that place. There was really a snout coming out the side, and if you look at it now with the architectural features that have been involved there, it's really quite attractive compared to what it previous was. And that's part of what TOD is all about, that a lot of people do forget. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, and then keep going. I'm just going to keep going forward, and then if you want to interrupt, please interrupt or add to or say, no, I disagree, because this is just a synopsis, and I'm really looking forward to your input. You know, you go, you keep going down, and they talk about fostering culture and social opportunities, and wide events. Yeah, that is definitely cultural and social program at the library has increased tremendously. Um, also getting into continuing to maintain a high-quality public green, municipal center lawn, maintain entrances, so on and so forth. All I can think of is the improvements we made along School Street over the last, again, this is all within the last three years, four years, five years. Sidewalks and the lighting. There's, there's nothing better than seeing the Christmas lights and the sidewalks and lights go down School Street. We all know how dark it used to be. Um, we do lack in the pocket parks and green spaces, but we're all aware of that too. Um, we're trying to implement some transportation recommendations from the Bethel Forward Plan. It's very difficult and time-consuming. You're dealing with a multitude of layers of government on the state level as far as the pedestrian traffic, the pedestrian bridge, tunnel, um, platform, whatever you want to call it. There's been a lot of changes on state level, and it's very difficult to communicate with them. But as we keep going forward, I think we will get there with the help. And I, you know, I didn't expect the end to be here, but it's Dan too. You know, I'm not saying we all do this. I'm speaking as an overall town, what we've done with the POCD, and that's how it should be, as a town overall. Not the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I point out some of your things, because it's important for you all to feel good about what you do for the community. Um, we are, when they're talking about traffic, we're finalizing the mobility plan. The mobility plan does a lot with pedestrian walkways and crosswalks and intersections and how we can make flow better within the downtown area. That'll be coming up. Um, also, um, our streetscape, again, the town, we did have a streetscape that was implemented. It was done back in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand. It's now, almost twenty-five years later, the town, as far as, um, I believe, and what I've been speaking with the Director of Public Works, is looking at sidewalks presently along Greenwood Avenue, and I'm hopeful that with the improvements that can be made with the sidewalks, in the streetscape, and, and the bulb outs, that's a transportation term for people, pedestrians going across the street, crosswalks, that is going to be our twenty-year fix-up, and, um, and it's due. And hopefully we'll continue working with that. So we do, we are working along those lines.
Has there been any more conversation with respect to making Greenwood Avenue runway and School Street the opposite runway?
Um, no, no. And, and specifically along those lines, it would be very difficult to accomplish that anyways, because Greenwood Avenue was the state road. You know, so that would be very, very difficult. Um, I will tell you, you know, the twenty percent set aside that you have, I'm more on page eighty-six in regards to strategies, revitalization of downtown, um, and that'll be the next conversation we have, will be the TOD at the next meeting, and you'll see some of the results of the five years that we've had TOD in effect. But you're talking about the twenty percent status, set aside that you have for TOD, um, fifty units. You have twenty units that are eighty percent of the state median income. So you can, we say we should continue to set aside the affordables, and you're doing that.
And then, just, because when you, I don't know how many of you looked at, you know, the state records. When I looked at them and I see where Bethel is in comparison to all the other towns, we are head and shoulders above about sixty-five percent of the other town in this area. I mean, they have no affordable housing. They have one percent. We at one point had over six. I think we're five-something right now. And I, I think a lot of it has to do with, with the programs that, that have been developed uh, by Planning, by the Planning and Zoning Department and by this commission. We should be proud of it. Sorry.
No.
No apologies.
No, don't apologize. Um.
We're at five-point-eight-five.
Yeah. Anyways, um, a lot of this is, is already occurs. I'm going to skip over things that really don't pertain to you, that may pertain to other commission or may pertain to you, but it's something that has to be done. Um, you have the mixed-use development. You've been working on that. Um, so I, the department's been working with the police department and the fire department on cell service out on the Route Six area for, for years. I'm on page eighty-seven. Um, the Route Six zoning regulations, okay, so you started one way with Route Six zoning regs. You went up, and then you changed, and you went back down, but you still, you still keep that affordable component, and that's very important. Um, the Stony Hill Mixed Use Development District, you've eliminated that regulation, so now you're back to twenty units an acre. And, um, a percentage of that has to be affordable, and you change the affordability to, uh, half eighty percent, half twenty, uh, fifteen percent. Um, again, you know, just as an example, a lot of these objectives, working with transportation is very difficult. Uh, it's not something that we can do by ourselves. We have to have the cooperation with the state of Connecticut. And again, um, that can be difficult. I, I think that Dan would agree with me on that. Um, a lot of these things you just do by nature. For example, encourage, discourage removal of trees within the rear yard of new developments on Route Six. That's more basic common sense than, you know, you all have, um, have to deal with. The expansion of Park Business Park is complete.
Yes.
That was done, the sub-division, and are all the lots sold now? I can't keep track.
One, one left.
Yeah, one left.
Well, the four that we redid, and there's a couple of the lots in there that.
Yeah, but the four, the four new lots are gone.
One, one left.
One left. Okay. Um, I would say that, uh, we also, we do an e-permit system now within the town. We're building permits and things of that nature. You can even get zoning permits on the lawn. Um, we have a full-time economic development director. Uh, we also have, um, a lot of, uh, expansion and improvements with utilities department, dealing with sewer um, and water. Also, we have, um, um, ninety-one, the Bethel Housing Authority. We all know I'm the chairman of that. Um, and you, you see the results of Reynolds Ridge, and, um, we're continually looking for other opportunities to serve our elderly in whatever way we can. Um, the, uh, we have lowered our parking. Uh, ninety-two. Uh, one thing that struck me on page ninety-two, especially pertaining to you all, is, um, yeah, you do, we do encourage multifamily housing when we're appropriate, but the thing that always gets me is that the second part of this, it says, support the development of smaller-scale multifamily projects with ten or fewer units. And I think that just by the participation of the general public and the input that you had with, with this particular project, I'm speaking in terms of forty-two Plum Trees Road. That's an eight-thirty G and affordable housing project with ten units of small cakes. And I think you should be proud of, uh, I think that's something to be proud of, because you're accomplishing a lot of the goals that you set with, with your POCD. You've reserved an historic house, the house in the front, which was something, you kept good, um, uh, landscaping in the back. So there's a buffer between that and the condominiums there. At the same time, you are providing the type of housing that we're very limited on within the town.
And they're keeping the rail bed.
The rail bed. And they kept the rail bed, correct?
The rail bed.
As far as.
The Social Society, that was wonderful.
I think it's important for you guys to remember those types of things when you're faced with some of the diversity that come, you know.
Oh, yeah, we were very excited. One of our, uh, the Social Society meetings because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You haven't done anything to change your large-lot zones to an acre zone. Um, the, and I was trying to remember, Beth, on page ninety-three, it says, complete. Yeah.
One thing that caught my eye is page ninety-two.
Yeah.
The D, the X-ray eligible seniors on local property tax relief program. Is this something we could, um, send down to the senior center? If they're not already? I don't, that might be even a question for, for Dan, just to educate them and let them know that, that relief is there.
Remember, it's not, I'm just going through things that are more in line with what your responsibilities are.
Okay.
But to answer that.
It caught my eye.
Yeah, but to answer that question, I am sure that, um, Lisa, the senior center director, does something as far as educating them. And I also know that, uh, John Sarver, who does, works in the tax relief program, they are always got their eyes open. But again, it's another form of communication. Dan is here.
Yeah.
Noted, and, and I'll also mention this, Mr. Chairman, if you know seniors, we also have a ARP tax program there, which helps do their taxes. So it's a great way to connect with senior center right now. You'll see, you'll hear a little more about that in the next couple of weeks, but the, the in town registrations are still available, so if you've got friends, come.
Okay, accessory dwelling units, you also changed the regulations now, so you're not dragging, not dragging, I'm sorry. But you're not making people come for a public hearing and do, to your board, when you provide housing for a senior member of their household. Uh, it's just a simple permit now to, um, in the downtown, to the Planning and Zoning Department. Um, the town has also improved sidewalk infrastructure near the educational park. That was done a couple of years ago. It's been a while back. Uh, just note for the record too, that we are a little lax in our bicycle planning, master planning, because I'm skipping right over to um, ninety-four, a lot of these, improved safety for all users. Instead of going into them on an individual basis, I would tell you the mobility study is laying the groundwork. Um, when I say mobility study, it's more of a data-driven, number one. Number two, with enough of design concepts to get us to the state of Connecticut for grants and funding capability. It's not the detailed design that an engineer would, would give you, but it is enough for them to be a part of it. And also, we were very fortunate during the study that we were able to have DOT members. We finally are able to associate faces with a lot of the turnover that has occurred up at DOT. So that was very helpful for us. Page ninety-five, they talk about Johnson and Rockwell Elementary. Complete the renovation, complete the track and fields. I mean, the town, we really have done a lot pertaining to that. Good programming. I don't know about those twenty-five to forty H group. That must have been something that our community had to deal with. Um, ninety-six, municipal center, we, we are getting there as far as ADAs. Uh, we got the bathrooms done. Um, site feasibility assessment, I should have that finalized for the old police station. Dan gave us the opportunity of the Bethel Housing Authority to at least assess the site for the feasibility of putting some more senior housing there, and we will be able to give the town a determination if it's feasible or not, um, probably by the second week of February. Um, uh, groundwater, we've done a lot with groundwater. Page ninety-seven, the town has dug wells down behind the, um, work field. We have, uh, those are almost, they're almost ready to come online, I think, next year.
Yep.
Um, bus shelters, uh, ninety-eight, we're dealing with bus shelters. There's bus shelters down town. I'm working with someone today as far as uh, one or two of the hotels on Route Six are looking to put bus shelters down there, and Route Six, if any of yous go up there, you know how badly they're needed.
Well, yeah, I'm looking.
The town, I think, I think you all feel the same way. We've got strong relationships with the land trust. Um, the town elders have strong relationships with HRA. Um, we all develop, we all work with West Cog, all the different departments. We, West Cog is a great regional planning agency, which we're involved with. And David is representing us on the, I don't know what year it is, two thousand and ninety-nine or twenty-two ninety-nine. Uh, the planning efforts for the I-84 project, David is our representative on that.
Is that coming back again?
Beth, can I jump in on something?
Yeah, go.
This is, um, we're talking about West Cog.
Yeah.
And we're talking about the mobility study and the traffic. Back in twenty-twenty, um, with West Cog, Bethel participated. In fact, it was Matt Nickerbacher, it was Libertini from the police department. Um, they gave information forward about trying to help Greenwood Avenue's safety with respect to the intersection of, uh, PT Barnham Square and also the library intersection here, where it would be like Depot Place in Greenwood. And, uh, we were, West Cog was awarded almost a five-million-dollar grant, and it'll cover ninety-three communities, including Bethel, which will be formally announced by Johanna Hayes tomorrow here at ten AM in New Rome. Um, we don't have a number, but it's going to help us with, you know, the, the light-up crosswalk signs, issues that we're having at those two places, and supposedly on Route Six, over-rounded why. Now, I'm not sure to what degree.
Ooh, that's great.
That's, you know, Route Six has been a huge challenge, as you know, with the growth, the traffic, and I get feedback that, vaguely, I get feedback about Route Six and the the amount of building over there, which I'm really glad you went down, you know. Um, but it's supposed to make money back to it, so it'll be announced tomorrow, so as part of the partnership of West Cog. And it's been in the works for a long time, long before I got here. So I would just thought I'd let you guys know that. Pay attention.
Um, uh, a lot of the other items on here pertaining to open space, um, and you all just sent the, your final, our third time letter to the Board of Slicking pertaining to tariff law.
Um, for me. I got, I got the hand it to me today, so.
Uh, third round on open space and also the need for conservation commission. Um, dealing with stormwater management, uh, you're going to be seeing some changes made to that, but there is something called the MS four, which the town has implemented. And you do have stormwater regulations that, uh, are included in your zoning regs in regards to that. Um, wasted things of that nature is really through the Board of Slicking and HRA, uh, and I know that we're very happy to that. Um, and that's really, that's just a general overview. And I hope I've made you all feel that you've, you've done.
A lot of good work.
A lot of good work, and you were party to a lot, not, and not, I, you have to understand, it's my um, opportunity to reinforce with you all that you do good work and you have done good work. And yes, there is more to do, but, um, that you are, you know, looking at. And yes, there is more to do, but, um, that you are, you know, looking at your plan, you're trying to implement a lot of the aspects of your plan. And so, and that's not to knock anybody else, any other departments, any first selection, previous or now or everybody. As a town, your part, you're trying to do your best and you've had done some good accomplishments over the last, remember, three years.
Yeah, I was surprised with that, my, my look, I said, oh, I'll tell you.
All right. Does anybody want to discuss any of this right this year? Do you want to keep going?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this might be a kind of a trigger for me to chime in as a first. Um, so first off, I stand behind everything Beth said. Um, you know, as a body, you've got a very, very difficult job, sometimes very thankless, obviously, it's controversial. You've done an amazing job as a body in this town. Uh, we've had a ton of growth in Bethel, and, you know, going forward, there's still a lot of challenges to think about. So, you know, keep working with the plan, keep working with the community. Um, there'll be a couple of things going on, uh, that we'll have a charter revision this year. So I'd like you to keep in mind, you know, as you're going forward and looking at things, think about things that might need to change with respect to your board. Uh, but also be very mindful of what's happening in the community, talk to your friends. You know, the the two biggest feedback items I get are concerns, are communication in town, which we're we're trying to work harder on. Uh, but also the development, you know, how fast we develop, where it is, traffic, just make sure that you guys are thinking about that in every step that you make. Uh, talk to your, talk to the community, um, you don't have to believe every naysayer, we talk about that a lot, you know, sometimes there's a few really squeaky wheels. But it's, but it's really, it's really your charge to look out for the town overall as you're implementing the plans. So, uh, you give a lot of thought to what you do in Route Six, um, you know, the traffic up there is one of the biggest issues. It's not fully, um, occupied yet, so we don't know what that's going to mean. Um, but we're here for the town too to help, we're, you know, we want to establish better crosswalks up there, better walkability, you know, to Big Y, through Mountain World Plaza, all that, we talk about that all the time. Um, and making sure that it's safe. You know, for me, the community needs to be safe, happy and healthy. Um, safety being number one, so I I can also say I appreciate everything you guys do with respect to making sure that, you know, we're we're minding that in everything we do with Greenwood Avenue, the mobility study, uh, and then the other final part of the development thing is parking. Be mindful, because it it, the problem is, you know, we have a lot of parking, but not at the times when people want to use it sometimes. And there's a lot of, I don't know, we talked about the municipal center parking lots, or something in fact, that people don't want to walk behind the building. We're we're coming up with ideas that maybe we can do something, um, so I'm sure I'll be coming back around to you to kind of alleviate that. Uh, but just keep in mind of those things, those are the, that's the feedback I hear. Um, I mean, as the first selectman, I get a lot of the feedback. And one of the things I want to try to do this year is just be better when I get, when I get comments, making, logging them and passing them out to you. So everybody hears what I hear in the community, and then you'll know too, what, you know, what you shouldn't, shouldn't believe. That sometimes they're one-offs, sometimes you're the trend. So I'll do a better job at kind of like, um, keeping in touch with the board. But I think like what Beth said is true, like, sometimes we forget to stop and say all the good things we have done. You have made some really great decisions as a as a board, and there are a lot more coming, big decisions coming that are going to really make the difference in this town going forward. So with that, I'll I'll be here to help you in any way I can from the department and from the first selectman department, work with Beth, anything we can do will be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Paul, I have a comment.
The floor is yours.
Okay, uh, I I think i- i- in this, in this plan, the most important word in it, it's conservation. And and it's not just conserving open space, but it's conserving the town as as we want to see it be twenty years from now. And I think we we have to be aware of that and aware of the open space we create, but also how we conserve what what, all the positive things about Bethel. Uh, and that's not easy to conserve when a developer comes in and wants to change things, or the neighborhood doesn't want things changed around them. But we have to, we have to work with that, uh, we have to, there has to be compromise back and forth so that the town, which is a living organism grows. Thank you.
Anything else? Beth, you look at you on the second.
No, no, I'm just. Words of words of wisdom, that's, you know.
He, he, he said it, I wanted to say like with one, one sentence.
Yes. That's it, that's what I'm, I'm like.
Well done, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Excellent, uh, so with that, we'll, uh, move on to the planning report.
Um, okay, so the other thing I wanted to cover with you all, um, just so you have a better understanding, I did have some free time to do it. Was you, on the one-on-one situation, you ask, where are we with this affordable housing, right? It's like, when are we ever going to meet, when are we ever going to, when are we going to get a moratorium? How come this town has a moratorium? How come we don't? Okay, so what I did was, I gave you what I use as a base fortune. Okay, the numbers attached to that without getting into the individual sites and things of that nature. You understand better how affordable housing has come, and there's two ways to, um, explain this. When you look at the first page, right? You look at what's listed, Lexington Meadows and Worcester Woods, you look at those numbers and it's like, why are they so big compared to some of the other points that are awarded, or how come they're less than? The reason is, those are units that are sold, they are for sale units, they're not rental units. So they don't count for as many points as a rental unit does. Ah, okay, there's a difference. One point at eighty percent for sale of a condo or a home, it's one and a half points if you rent, if it's a rental unit. Same with the sixty percent median income, it's one and a half point to sell, it's two points to rent. So that's where a big difference starts showing when you start going through those numbers. In eight thirty G, uh, uh, property, Lexington Meadows is an eight thirty G property. When it's something is an eight thirty G property, you get a quarter of a point for all the market rate units that are located in the, in the, in the project. Okay? So it's all a point system on what this is based upon. But also you have to remember what comes into play is we just had a census update. Um, I think we we added an additional seven hundred residential units in a lot, in ten years' time. So then our, our two percent has increased. So in order for us to get a moratorium, we have to have two percent, meaning two percent of new development since the act was enforced. A lot of these developments go back to two thousand and four, two thousand and five, when the act first started acting. That's a good way for me to get to my moment, okay? So over the last twenty-two years, twenty-three years, whatever we're at, your final numbers show up on the last page. But also as a reminder, what you should know, and in fact, um, it shouldn't be, um, there's one missing, when we talk about the eight thirty G, some progress of being built. And that would be the newest one that you just approved, which is forty-two Plum Trees Road. So add that to the list too. And yes, as soon as some of these come online, and they say come online, they have to be C O, so it has to be built, got to have a certificate of occupancy. And as soon as some of these come online, yes, we're going to be, I'm going to be talking to the first selectman, Mr. Carter, and hopefully we will receive a moratorium in regards.
Real quick question.
Yeah.
Did the state ever contact you yet about the small cities block grant?
We did talk about the small cities block grant, and I did, um.
Okay.
I sent you, uh, sent or like sent yours now, so.
Okay.
That's the answer in regards to that too, you know? Now, to do a moratorium, this pile of paper right here is what has to be submitted to the state of Connecticut and and more too, but I just haven't put it all together. It's it's, it's a little complicated, it takes time and effort by staff to do it. And every first selection that's ever been party to has always given us permission to do what we need to do to get it done. Amanda's learning about the affordable housing thing, but I think, again, that's another area where I think that the commission should be proud of yourselves. Because of where you're at. Okay?
The, um.
And it's very near in the future. All right?
Projects that use T O D and, uh, the schmood don't count towards us?
Uh, they do, when they are, these are just ones that are certified, that are done, okay?
Once they have their C O.
Once they have their C Os, they're done, for example, um. I do have one that, uh, no, I I put it in here, eighty South Street, eighty South Street just received their C Os last week. Uh, that's the apartment that's complex there, see that incident? But you have, uh, numerous opportunities. What I just listed in the rear of this score is an eight thirty P application that you approved, okay? Excellent, and lastly, I just want to see my time. Um, it, again, it's an opportunity that I had to address some questions that have risen and some comments that have been made over the last oh, year or two, whatever, dealing with the planning and zoning commission and pre-application, okay? Before an application gets to you all, almost every single application, they work with the department and, um, to get to the point where they have, uh, the applicant has a clear understanding of you may need some help with this, you may need that. I don't think that, you know, they're at looking for inputs from the town, from fire marshal, from the building official, from the town engineer or public works department or something, right? What we do is, they call, they make an appointment, we come in and we iron out quirks or perks or any possible issues that we see before it gets to you. So in other words, there are, there are items, seventy-seven South Street is a good example, the old foggy building. That was six months of plan. You don't have a, you don't have a Diamond Avenue application in front of you. That's been ongoing and ongoing and ongoing for, I don't know when that's coming in. Um, but it's all done in-house before it gets to you. There have been instances over the last couple of years where you've run into ongoing applications that take on forever and ever, and it just seems to drag on. A couple of those, um, examples would be that I could think of was sixty-four Worcester Street, which was, uh, an eight thirty G application. Uh, forty. Um. Uh, there was a couple of other ones too, and and they, uh, forty-two Nashville Road. Did apply to the wetlands commission, so it was table, table, you know? So again, by stating this policy, you're saying, meet with staff first. Because in those instances, they chose not to, six Cindy Lane is another one, I'm sorry, I couldn't think.
Hmm.
They chose not to, they said, oh, no, it's a simple application, we're going to submit to the commission. And all it did was tie up you, tie up the applicant, delay the process and, um, involve much more work from you as a commission and from the town as a whole. So by developing this policy, you're you're putting it on the record and just stating, um, that hold a pre-application, you cannot demand someone to to have a pre-application, but you can certainly say to hold an application.
It helps in working out a little.
It helps in working out the bugs, and then if someone refuses to do it, you have the opportunity, look, this is the policy of the planning and zoning commission. You, we told you before you walked in the door to do a pre-app, you chose not to. Now, statutorily, we're running out of time and we have to make a decision. Right? How many times has that been in fallen into your lap?
So where does this go?
So where does this go is, that's going to be, what I'm asking for you is to adopt it as a commission. We'll put it, we'll attach it to any application that is, um, put out there, uh, the inland wetlands commission is going to do the same thing. So it's part of the application, it's part of any record that we have of an application. It's helpful, it's helpful to you, it's helpful to staff.
It's helpful to the applicant, I believe.
It's helpful to everybody.
It's a no-brainer in in my line of work, any development that we weren't doing, we don't do a project without doing this in any town, whether it's a policy or not, because you want to know what you're walking into.
You can't make it a law, you can't make it a regulation.
That was going to ask that question.
No, you can't.
Can't do it. But if, you know, to your point, you you find something out from the fire marshal, the building department, and you address it then. And yeah, as you said, it it takes a little bit longer initially, but in the long run, it's usually faster.
It makes everything go, go much smoother, because everybody is on board.
I mean, I've sat with you before on projects.
Yeah. Yeah, yes, I'm just laughing.
Are you looking?
We're going to commit this to motion.
Yes, I would, I would like a motion, no, I would like a motion, I'd make it be, I'd like it to be formal, so it would go in your, uh, application.
I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the planning and zoning commission policy regarding the application submissions as suggested by staff dated, draft dated one twenty-three twenty.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any names? Suspicions, motion passes. Congrats on the new policy.
Thank you. And that is all I have for you this evening, thank you for your patience, let me look at my minutes, okay? I appreciate it.
Any commission comments, Mike?
Anything else you want me to start hitting on?
Nothing, nobody, Bob, you got anything?
No comment, save the ducks.
Okay, one final comment. On if nobody else has anything to say.
The floor is yours.
Okay, this meeting on Monday night, zoom, uh, Google it, come in person, whatever you could possibly do, because it is so important. But the second part, and I, and I mentioned it in an email I sent to all of you today, was Melanie had a great, a great idea of if you're afraid to ask a question, because again, it is in the public, we're on Google, you know, the public can listen to you and and the questions that you ask. You can email something to Melanie and, you know, and she will even private and bring it up anonymously to the board. Um, it, it, you know, if you want to say anything, even about staff, you don't like, if you think staff's, you know, does too much or isn't doing the right thing or something like that, bring it up to Melanie and Chuck. Chuck is our great land use attorney, represents us in court cases, and Melanie is our town councilor. But if you're afraid to mention it in public, email it to her. No question is dumb. And it only helps you all going forward. I'm sorry, I talked too much. I see, I, I, he's got to go because I'm looking at him.
Mr. Chairman.
Is that being recorded?
Yes, it will be.
Just for a little kick factor, how long do you think that meeting will be?
I would say an hour to an hour and a half.
Okay. I haven't had a town, so my mom's coming over, so.
That's Monday night.
That's all right.
No, I have the kids Monday night. I have to make other arrangements.
Send them over with my mom. There you go.
Well, there you go. If we can find somebody, we could just make my office the. I've got a TV and you can, they can all watch movies. Well, there you go. Find somebody to watch.
Bring, bring the kids to the meeting, the meeting will be over quicker.
Yeah.
Any other commission?
Motion, George, Jerry.
I have one thing. I just want to make a comment to the fellow commissioners, uh, a thank you, uh, voting, uh, the way you did tonight, uh, makes you proud. Uh, and as a point of business, um, we need to get out of the habit of applying to all on the, on the email chains. Because then that becomes subject to F O I requests, we'll learn about that more in a couple of weeks, um, but just a reminder.
Really?
Yes.
Oh.
So if we get a, if we get an email from Beth or Amanda and you need to reply, just don't hit reply to all, just reply singularly. And, uh, it is not, uh, subject to the F O.
They'll learn more about that Monday night.
They should have that information, I did not know that.
So.
And it's about attendance, it's really not a big issue.
Yeah.
But anything, any other comments outside of, I can't come.
Yeah.
I don't want to hear.
Yeah. Uh, with that, public input?
There we go.
E J? Want to step up in, uh?
B J Liberty at Grand State.
Excellent.
Um, about the P S two D. So one of the things was, um, chair parking, investigate chair parking. So my question first of all is, the traffic study that there was a meeting in the, uh, general purpose room during the summer. general purpose room during the summer.
On the mobility study.
Right. Where they were going to do the bump outs.
Yeah, okay, that's what I.
Is that on YouTube? Because I have looked for it on YouTube and I couldn't find it.
That wasn't a meeting that was held, tried it commissioner, but me as staff.
But you were up there.
I was up there.
I mean, the, the commissioner was sitting up there.
Sheriff, if I can comment. I'll try to get your information, I believe there was one to that available, because that would have been done through economic development and I understand the P and Z. But I believe there's a link that I can get to you. I believe, but I've not promised you. There was something available, I just don't know if the recording turned out. There was one, one of those meetings recently that the equipment failed, there was a problem. So I'll find out.
I didn't do it.
Any other public comment?
So one of the things was investigate shared parking. Because any progress been made with that?
I would say, when it says, I would say shared parking is an ongoing part of their regulations as they stand today. And there have been no proposed changes. As far as shared parking, the latest ones that happened is, for example, over at the Hunk Shopping Center, they took shared parking under consideration for the uses there. There also was a preliminary discussion involving English Truck where they were looking at shared parking regarding to that. So when they said, I can't remember when the regulations for shared parking have been adopted. But I think it's been prior to the P O T D. At this point, it's up to them to decide if they see a need to revisit those regulations.
What were those regulations?
It's like a parking six point two.
Okay, in the zoning.
In the zoning. Where there's an allowance, for example, there's an allowance for a twenty-five percent reduction in parking, if it's shared, if you can prove that it's like shared uses between, let's say, residential and commercial.
I guess I'm thinking more of, not necessarily a zoning thing, but like Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo, you know, the bank is not as
Not like they used to be.
Right, you don't have to go into the bank as much, so they have parking available.
Right.
But yet, you know, and some of the restaurants have parking available, maybe not during eating hours, but at other points in time. And could there be some kind of like financial thing with the town where Wells Fargo, you know, gets a little money on the side and they say, okay, it can be municipal parking, you know.
There's, there's, there's different avenues that the town could take. But they are above me. So I can't really.
So, man, comment stretch, so with the parking mobility study, we haven't got everything back from DOT. But one of the things that was identified is there, there's a lot of parking in town, to your point, that are owned by businesses or private estates, like, you know, strong, etc. The question is, can we do something that works together with them? And also doesn't put anybody in the jam of liability, as you mentioned. We've talked about a number of things, we're all just kind of a pie in the sky still. We've talked about tax breaks. We've talked about, you know, leasing spaces. It's very, very difficult plan at this point, but we're looking at it. Because we have to come up with the ways to increase parking in town, there's no question that, especially when we hit these really busy times.
Thursday night coming into town.
Yeah, we're slammed. They'll make a bomb of things, but we, we are looking at it, we just haven't arrived at the answer yet. We're waiting on some more information from that parking mobility study. You know, to really see how it bears out, but I, I agree with you, that kind of shared parking is something we should be looking at.
Any other public comment?
No, nothing, thank you.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion to do a journey.
All right, turn it off, David.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night.